About it.
Because that's a great question. I didn't even think about sort of that concept of it. Is that even with 25 minutes and 75 more hours, which I guess is like 10 more days or give or take, right, nine or 10 more days, we're still only in the middle of this group.
Right.
I mean, there's, you know, a district or two, and I don't know what the difference is between the middle and the top, but there are districts that are doing a lot more. And, um, you know, I think this is a huge amount of progress that obviously took a lot of work on a lot of different fronts, but it almost feels like we still have a lot of way to go, you know?
We should always be looking to increase instructional time if we can. If it's possible to do, we should try to increase instructional time.
I agree.
You know, obviously, there's a lot of arguments like, well, what are you going to do with the time, right? So obviously, that's our responsibility to make sure that the time's valuable. But we have to make sure that we're trying to, you know, not that we want to have an eight-hour day or a nine-hour day for kids, but let's try to have, you know, anything we can do where we can make these small increases, maybe, you know, another go around, maybe we get a little bit more time, something like that.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, obviously, we talked about it, and I think the last meeting I was here in regards to, you know, the teachers and working with us to, I mean, this was an obviously, you know, a one-sided thing. I mean, obviously, everyone had to agree that the merit of increasing time for students and, you know, a lot of things, I said this the other day, but a lot of things goes to our negotiating team, but also to the teachers and seeing the value in this. It's important. Sorry to go off tangent, Mike.
Not at all. The other thing we discussed on our committee meeting was science materials adoptions. And Steve, I believe number four, is that the adoption of the new curriculum materials?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what number four is, is the, we discussed exactly what we were adopting and went through it pretty thoroughly, so.
And we shared with you the websites if you were interested in looking at what exactly you're getting for the cost. And we had the money budgeted for this year, so, and it came under budget.
And this was part of a larger, multi-year curriculum analysis and revision. So this was something that we were prepared for. It wasn't something that just popped up. So it's something we're continuing to look at, additional curriculum and material that we're kind of renewing and getting new material in. That was it for my report. And if there are no objections, I will move items one through six as a block.
Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Don?
Yes, sir.
He's on the ball. I think one piece of note here, I think, is if you're following at home or here in the audience, is item number five, which I think shows a significant outlaying of funds from the district that go towards special education, which is a variable that sometimes is difficult to hit and is obviously, in many cases, very much needed. But that, I think, is a good example of how the district sometimes is in dire straits because there is an out-of-district placement that costs us $70,000 or $80,000 or $90,000 that we can't necessarily budget for. And some things just don't go the way we want them to as a result. And it just is, I wanted to highlight that because, and it seems like sometimes you have a fairly significant budget and you look at line like, or lines like these, and it shows where we're out of control sometimes.
Yeah, I, I read the numbers. It's funny you say that. Seventeen students, 780, almost $783,000 in out-of-placements districts on a $30 million budget total. So obviously, like Dave said, needed for many of these students and certainly the appropriate thing to do, but obviously, from a financial standpoint, a big outlaying of funds that are going to seventeen students.
Just to clarify, those, some of those are the same students because if you look, some are school year, then ESY.
Okay.
So I believe the number is 11 students. And then some have the ESY.
And some have the Aids and...
If you look at the big numbers, there's 11 big numbers, and then there's, then there's six small numbers, so the six small numbers are the ESY.
Gotcha.
Smaller numbers, I should say.
But I think that proves your point, not proves your point necessarily, but emphasizes your point, right?
Higher amount per student, yeah.
Does it align to what you told everybody in the budget? Do we have a line item, right?
I don't remember what line item it was.
We have a line item, these, the students that you see here are budgeted, but our budget for out-of-district placements as of 7/20 has been expended, meaning we don't have any other slots available for this. I mean, the money would have to come from somewhere else. And that's, actually, there is, there is a small number left due to the fact that one of the settlements ended up being about a third of what we budgeted. So we do have some funds available for another one if that happens.
Say, I thought it was my understanding that this state, or maybe it's changed, doesn't let you budget unless you actually have the student physically present. You can't say, the trend is every year one more shows up, so we're going to put money aside so that we don't have to steal it from other places, but they said we're not allowed to do that.
You can budget for like, what you think is coming, like in other words...
Well, you can now.
I have, no, I have this kid and he's into work, so I'm going to budget for him.
Oh, yeah.
Not like just any, right.
You can't budget for a kid you don't know.
Right, right.
Yeah, because I thought I heard it one time, even if they're an early intervention and they tell you they're coming, if they're not physically in your district yet, you can't budget for it.
It's scary.
The, the, the number I was talking about was a budgeted student that the settlement ended up being a lot less.
But, I mean, almost to Mariana's...
I'm, I'm just saying it's not, I mean, it's here tonight, we should definitely talk about it. It is a very large number, but it's not really a surprise because this is the same number we talked about basically in January, in February, and March, and when we put together the budget.
Yeah, and I think it's, but, I mean, I don't know if you're making this point or not, Mariana, but I think it, it goes to emphasize the idea that, you know, one more student walking into the district who we weren't anticipating or who we felt maybe we could educate, but maybe we can't now, and now we have to pay for an out-of-district placement, it's like a $60,000 bill.
I think that is important to make, that they don't allow us to not have to then go steal from somewhere else.
Well, I mean, no, in advance, but if it happens, then we have to...
Right. If it happens, we have to, you know...
So basically, what happens then is it stresses the budget.
Yeah.
Money, money and discretionary items like computers and textbooks and pencils and things like that have to go, have to be reduced, then has, the money has to be applied to the settlement. That's exactly what happens.
It also proves the dedication of, I think, the district to doing what's right for these particular students that need it. So it's, it really speaks to us saying, if they need it, we have these conversations all the time, and the bottom line is if, if a student needs out-of-placements district and it's the best thing for them, then we're going to support it and do the right thing.
Yeah. Any other points of clarity, comments, questions about one through six? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, except I will abstain on number five, the much debated number five.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
All right. Far, you mind moving us through policy?
Sure. I'd like to ask the board to review the list on the attached agenda for policy first reading and vote to accept first reading tonight. There's a new org chart, substance abuse, bus driver responsibility, emergency school bus procedures, and an attendance policy ready.
So tonight, when I brought up the school bus procedures, one to discuss in transportation, Mr. Forte said that there wasn't time and that we would put them in committee to have discussions next month and then put them on.
Right. These were, these were all tabled last time. We left them on there so that we keep track of it, but there's no reason why all of these can't go into the committees for August if you want to. The only one I think we should move is, you know, the first one.
The org chart, because it's not a committee.
It's already been done.
The, I haven't read all the, well, I was going to abstain on this because I haven't read all of these policies to be able to say one way or the other. I'm happy letting them go into committee and then coming back out if you guys are all okay with it, too.
Yep, that's the plan.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Same thing you are, I have some questions on some of them, so I don't have to do that.
No, we should.
So I assume for clarity's sake, policy and regulation 8630, is that coming to personnel because it talks about people or transportation because it talks about buses?
I think I would have put it in transportation.
Okay. And the other ones all are personnel, correct, other than the org chart?
Right.
Because it's staff and support staff, so that would go to personnel?
Right.
Okay, so if I have questions on those, I can send them to the chair of personnel? Excellent.
You may.
I will send them.
So I guess we'll change it to just the org chart for first reading, adoption.
For number one.
Yes.
Do we have a second on that? For first reading for the org chart alone.
I'll second that. Any comments or questions about the org chart or concerns about it, issues?
And just rather than send an email on the substance and abuse, I noticed, you know, reference to Jersey statutes, would it be bogus to put federal in there also?
I mean, those are legal things that the, that are, that are policy company rights, the lawyers for the policy company. I can ask them if they should put the federal in there.
Well, you know, the way this state is, they could legalize marijuana right now, like they have in Colorado and a few other states, and it's still a federal crime. So, and I think federal law is supposed to trump state law in certain states. Maybe we're tracking it to, just to give us some more, you know, latitude where the state doesn't consider something substance abuse for the federal government, and we may as a board agree with the federal government, not the state.
I'll tell you, Don, there's a, there's a lot of issues with that right now in regards to some of these states and some companies even that, you know, may restrict one sort of drug or not, in some states allowing them and some others not. It's a whole thing that, I'll tell you, no matter what we put down, we're not going to be right.
Well, and in those four, the, the policy and regulations, one is for the staff and one is for support staff, we just passed all of these a year ago, correct? I mean, they're all from May 2014, and now they're changing, it's, you know, and when you compare the two documents, they look completely different, but it's all, it seems to me, to be tatted in vapors.
Vape, that was in there.
The original one, I don't think so.
No, it was.
Vapes.
So, I mean, you know, it's, and we just went through all this, so I wish they would get like, but you know, if ethics keeps shifting, why do we expect the rest of the law to stand still?
What is, what do they say about, what was the thing about ethics in New Jersey?
Ethics in New Jersey is like shifting sand. The one thing that you should consider rock solid.
So any other questions about, so we're going to send all the others to committee, but the first one, any questions about that one? The org chart?
Yeah.
All right, roll call, please, on that?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
I'm going to abstain on that. Please. Operations, you guys didn't do anything in operations, you didn't have time for transportation, you said, right?
No, we had a, well, did you transportation?
Yeah, if you do, please.
Okay, so we met tonight and we talked about, right, I can talk about all of this? That we have had now for the better part of, well, all of this year, I believe, Jordan Consulting working with us, and right now, we have the transportation department with some added clerical help, working on getting the files the way Jordan thinks we should have them, so that's in process this summer. And we have some hard places to bus to that actually, places in Denver where a bus can't possibly get and turn around, and we're going to have to do aid and loo to the parents instead of, and starting in September, do we need to vote on the transportation after hour answering service or?
No, I just brought it up, yeah.
Okay, so everyone knows we will be expending $840 this year to get an after-hours answering service for the transportation department so that, since their day starts at, I don't know what time, six?
Six.
And really does end at three, if you have an issue at four.
We cover four, we cover six to four.
Okay, so we're, we're six to four, if you have questions after that, we'll now have an answering service instead of just a machine, you're leaving a message after the beep.
If there's an emergency, it'll, it'll get routed.
They'll route it.
It'll get routed to somebody that can answer a question rather than just get answered the next morning. Obviously, we don't, I'm not, I'm not talking about like, I left my lunchbox, but, you know, I don't know where my kid is.
If there's an emergency, exactly. Like, I got home from work and my kid's not sitting here, what did you?
Who's going to, who's going to staff that, and is that going to cost any additional money?
It's actually like a doctor's answering service, it's a place in Butler.
Yeah, no, but saying who's going to, the page or the phone call is going to come to somebody, you?
You.
Okay.
It goes to me, the VA, and the transportation director.
But only if they escalate it to that level.
Only if it gets escalated, like, obviously, it's got to be something else.
I assume we, they're ones that do this for other districts?
They do have two other school districts, the guy said, right?
So do we have to make our own guidelines if it's this escalate, if it's not?
Yeah.
We do our own, or they have a set?
No lunchboxes, but things like that's important.
We establish our own guidelines.
So is, how often, right now, do we have this issue where at four, at 4:30, and somebody's trying to find out, hey, where's my kid? I mean, how often, how many times per year would you estimate?
I don't think we've, I don't think we've had that at all since I've been here, but there's been, there have been other types, emergency type things that have come up. And through the survey, communication was an issue. So this, I think, is one, one phase that, trying to correct the communication issues that we've had. And I don't, I don't think that we can say this is going to, this is going to solve like five things that happened, I don't know. I'm just, it was just something that I talked about and researched a little bit, talked to, talked to our transportation person and said, what do you think? Like, does this, does this make sense? It started to come to light to me when I realized, like, for example, my son, next year, he'll be in fifth grade, he'll probably get in the house by himself now. You know, most of the time, obviously, he's in the house and everything's fine, but what happens if he's not there? When, by the time my wife gets home from work at 4:02, right? Who does she call? The only mechanism she has right now, obviously, she'd call me, right? But if it's somebody else.
But let's say it's somebody else's one.
Right, yeah. If it's anybody else, all they can do is call the police. So that's why.
I mean, the other suggestion I was going to make is, I mean, it's not a big expense in a $30 million budget, but it's 800 bucks, and could we talk to the police department? They staff a non-emergency desk 24 hours, seven days a week. Could we work with them and try to see if, if we can start off with that? If that doesn't mean it'd be a solution, then we can go to spending money, I mean, just to avoid the 800 and some odd dollars.
Well, the police would definitely take the calls. They would definitely, you know, they would definitely take the calls and send a patrol car and all that stuff.
If we don't have a big issue with it, and I understand it's a student safety issue and I want to make sure we're doing the right thing, but, I mean, if we can work with the police department, we're trying to do a lot of collaborative work with them right now, with the town, it's an option, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, I mean, the possibility is that we don't actually know what need there is actually yet. It may be a year from now, we'd come back and say, we got one phone call, we don't need it anymore, right?
We got no phone calls, maybe. You know, you do it for a year or two and you get no phone calls, and you just say, okay.
Well, no phone calls that rise, we know right now that people call and leave messages on the machine.
But nothing to the escalation part of it.
But any that rise to the level that we act.
Even, look, there's, we've had several phone calls, like, I don't know where my kid's supposed to go tomorrow. To me, that's an emergency, I'll, we'll take care of that. If, if a parent called up and says, I don't even know what bus stop my kid's supposed to go to, I'll make sure that somebody gets the answer to them. I mean, if it's 2 o'clock in the morning, probably not. But if they, if they call us, you know, till 8, 9 o'clock at night, we'll, we'll get an answer so that they know.
I'm sure if we, I'm sure the, the police desk, if you just said to them, hey, listen, call, call you, I mean, they would call. It's just something to look into, that's all. I just wanted to throw it out there as an option that...
The only, the only thing that I would, I think in theory, it makes sense. The only thing I would say is that I don't think the police department probably wants to get my lunch, my son left their lunchbox, which, we'll probably get those calls, right? Lunchbox on the bus? Then we're essentially saying that the parents got to decide whether or not it raises to a certain level of escalation. If it's this escalation, call the police, if it's not, just leave a message, beep type of thing.
Yeah, if it's urgent, I mean, if someone thinks urgent is I lost my lunchbox.
Well, that's certainly it, but there's other levels of urgency, I think, that may or may not rise to that level.
I mean, I agree with you, Otto, I agree with all...
Just try for a little bit, for a couple of months and see if it becomes an issue.
They're going to track the calls, how many, and maybe give us some type of categorization of what they're about. Maybe some of the, maybe the kid's missing, maybe something to do about, you know...
It's always hard to stop something when you just started. So it's like, hold the Band-Aid off, even though, you know, there may be five people that used it, but those five people felt it was really important. So once you start it, I think it's going to be very difficult for us to, to stop.
I, I like the idea of, of trying to see what sort of metrics we get from it, and if, I think, a year from now, we look at it and we see it's not valuable, if we're not getting $800 worth, then I 100% agree with you, we find an alternative. But I almost feel like it's, as a level of assurance and insurance, almost.
We signed a contract with them, it's a one-year contract?
Yes, it is. Isaiah, I forgot to ask in committee, but I assume since this is coming out of analyzing the data we got from the transportation survey, we didn't budget for it, right?
It's not specifically budgeted for, no.
But we had funds in the transportation lines to pull this from?
Yes, we do.
One less transmission.
I don't think I can get a transmission for that, but okay.
Transmission, $30? Anything else in committee report for transportation, Mariana?
I believe that's everything.
Don, you want to take us through BNG?
Yes, we did have a meeting tonight with finance and transportation. I'll just highlight some of the things we talked about. We talked about the summer projects, we don't want them on, on schedule, no problems, which is good. We talked about improving the bus garage security with some, some cameras. We talked about tree maintenance up at Lakeview, that we got a tree that could be a hazard hanging over the playground, and we got a very competitive quote from an in-town person that, you know, operates a, you know, tree cutting company for $800, which, and we had a high bid of $4,000, so that's great that we're getting it done for a lot less money. We already had on the agenda the dual use, resending that. Lakeview projects, we talked about, the Lakeview drainage, tech security, we have quotes in progress for that. We discussed the sale of the old Board of Ed office of 501 Open Aki, and we, you know, we do now have a, a minimum amount that we're going to sell for that'll be on the agenda at the next meeting. And we also talked about the, the demographic room utilization study because we have, you know, some, some new projects going on in town, and some on the radar screen that, I guess, may or may not happen, but you're going to have the, you know, those commuter apartments that are going to go in over Essling Lake, and that's going to include some low-cost housing, so you could get some kids out of that. We, you know, we had an estimate from the beginning when they talked about the project. The Redmond Press area there, there's a proposal there to put, it was 100 units?
55.
55 units, okay, 55 units there, so that could also result in some additional kids into the school.
Don, where's that?
It's on Diamond Spring, it's on Route 53, you should go, going out of town before from town on the right, right-hand side as you're going south on there. And I guess they're also looking at some other pieces of property in that vicinity, across the street from True Town where the Chinese restaurant is, the takeout. Yeah, well, what I was told. So, and then there was another, I don't know where the other piece of property would be, I guess it's zoned for four houses and, you know, I guess there's some, a quest for a variance there that could result in more, more cluster units. So I wasn't for the demographic room utilization study, but, you know, our student count's been going down over the last five years or so, but if some of these new complexes are built, it could cause an uptick in the student population again, so we certainly would want to be mothballed in trailers, if we may need them in the future to house more students.
So right now, most of them are before the planning board not approved? The only one that's approved and it's in the process of being built is Essling Lake. So if they were to do a snapshot demographic study right now, they talk about things that are not even approved by?
Talk about potential, I think.
Well, the last demographic study we had, Essling Lake, was before the town council, but not approved. I don't know if they give me the demographic study.
I remember reading it in there.
Is it?
At least some, we're saying since then, but there was something in there about it where they talked about 100 units and not many kids because it was so expensive or something like that.
And the other thing to keep in mind with this, though, that we discussed is that as an incentive to build a demo, these new locations would not pay any property taxes to the school for five years.
So we're offered incentives, the people to build a demo?
That's, anything else to keep in mind?
That's, I got to clarify that, though, it's not...
It's a deferred.
A pilot, P-I-L-O-T, stands for payment in lieu of taxes. When you have a pilot program, the state, the, the, the local taxes for the schools stay stagnant, meaning that the, the development of the property, the school district does not see, it can happen in all different forms. In the form we have right now in Essling Lake is that the, the increase in value of the property, the, the tax does not go to the schools, it goes to the town for five years. Then it goes to the schools like normal. Sometimes it goes to the county, the town and the county, it can go to the schools, there's all different ways to do it, but it's, it's a way for towns to redevelop areas that were, or I guess you could say are unsightly or outlived their useful life at one time, and then they can redevelop it. So that's what it is. So just to make it clear, you still get the tax dollars from the property, of the value of the property it is currently, but you don't get the increased revenue to the schools.
For the improvement.
The town does for five years.
For the improved value, for building.
Right, so for example, if you had a property that was worth a million dollars as is, you'd still get the property tax on the million dollars. If you do, if you do a redevelopment of it and now it's worth $10 million, you don't get the property tax on the new nine for five years in this particular case. But that can be all different years, it could be seven years, it could be five, it can be all different ways.
Now, we as the board don't necessarily have a seat at that table to decide that, the town decides that.
No, concept only.
The planning board in the...
The planning board.
Yeah, no, we don't have any say at all.
We have no say in where those dollars go.
Well, yes, A, we don't have any say in where those dollars go. Right now, the town hasn't approved them, other than Essling Lake, which at the point of our last demographic study, it listed it as concept only, and they didn't give us any numbers for students to plan.
And so, and outside of the demographic study, though, this is a room utilization, I mean, considering we're getting rid of trailers and we're trying to...
So are we talking about motions or is he still in the committee?
Oh, I was asking, but I'm asking, but I was asking the question about it, though, sorry. But is this not just demographics, though, right, Don?
Yeah, it would include space, demographics and room utilization studying.
But from a, the other thing, too, going back to the taxes, is St. Clair is going, potentially going for profit, being sold to Prime Healthcare, could potentially increase tax revenue also. They will be a taxable entity as opposed to a non-profit label, yeah.
Just one positive. Any other parts, Don?
That's it. And I'll, I have a couple of motions to move here.
Just please.
For buildings and grounds. Number one, we're going to rescind the portion below from the buildings and grounds motion regarding dual use that was approved June 22nd, the dual use is never needed for Room B-14 at Lakeview School. And also, we have a resolution to authorize use of settlement with the YOGA Energy Products LLC, formerly known as Jagway. And I want to thank the former BA and Steve for working hard on this to not have us legally liable for this cleanup of the spilled oil, which would have been very expensive, so that's going along very well, bringing that to closure finally.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments about this portion?
I know it's supposed to be kind of like on their nickel, do we need a not-to-exceed[1623.87]
cost or something since your final say in?
On which one, Barb?
The, I don't know how to say it. There is no cost.
The oil, the oil.
As of this moment, there's not, but...
You mean, you mean the remediation of value yet?
Yes.
Well, there's no, there, we didn't, we didn't take the agreement where they would give us a number.
No, I understand. So when they finish, as soon as they get done next month, like the settlement is between you and legal. Like, we don't know for certain what's gonna happen until they finish.
But it's gotta be accepted by the board attorney and the superintendent.
Right.
So you're saying...
But there's no cost listed.
But I thought all these whereas has stated that Jagway agreed to undertake all the cleanup on their nickel.
Right.
And that it finishes when we and the Department of Ed, no.
Department of Environmental Protection.
Environment, thank you. Says that it's actually cleaned up, just like they just did with the board office. They had the final say that that was, that site was finally cleaned up, right?
Right.
And we should probably say that this is obviously not complete at this point, exactly. Right?
The settlement is, the reason why we're doing it this way is due to the fact that if we wanna get the work done this summer, we'd have to approve it tonight pending attorney review.
I mean, so I guess the only thing in here that as a layperson you see that protects your, the thing that jumps out to me that protects us is that they took responsibility for, it doesn't ever say, and will take responsibility for all the cleanup. I guess that's the next whereas. So, I mean, I thought that was what, you know, our lawyers worked on this.
Our lawyer wrote this.
Yeah.
This is what he said, "We have to pass to get to be protected, have it done."
That they're, it's all on them.
That they're responsible, right.
So there's no minimum, whatever. There should be nothing.
Yeah. Says Jagway will perform the following as pertains to the fuelless bill.
Remediation.
Certain remediation, cleanup and construction efforts of the value of middle school. Pay for certain costs attributed to the, I guess the question is certain costs. I mean, pay for all costs, but, yeah. I mean, is your concern that it's leaving it up to the board attorney and Mr. Forte?
Yeah, it's an unknown at this moment in time because they're not finished.
But nothing in this says the board will take on any financial responsibility.
Right, that's my point. Maybe we should say that.
They should say something like, "The board is not, you know, the number is zero. Not to exceed, not to exceed zero."
It's a, by omission.
Right.
Does that put you into a situation where you can't put down a seat or something along that line?
Well, that's the thing. I don't know. It just says, you know, it's unknown as of this moment. Rest in assessment.
I, I thought that the, I mean, this, as I read it and the way I've understood it from sort of the beginning of all the hard work that you guys have done, was sort of to the degree that they would take on the responsibility of, of the spill to begin with, and then also the remediation, the cleanup and the get back to normal state.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I mean, maybe I'm not reading, maybe I'm not...
We're gonna have to vote on the settlement agreement. If you look at the last paragraph, it says, "The board attorney is hereby directed to prepare a settlement agreement in accordance with the terms of this resolution, consistent terms as are revealed to the board attorney and superintendent." So, you know, maybe, maybe you put the zero in there when, when the final settlement agreement comes. I mean, it's more of an authorization to move forward with it.
I asked him specifically if we could do any of the work or anything like that prior to board approval. He said, "No, you have to do this first. Then you can settle on it. They'll do the work, and then you can, whatever happens in the August meeting, we might have to do some other things."
I would hope, but I am not a lawyer. But we pay our lawyer to protect the district. And if our lawyer wrote this up and he left us open and didn't protect the district for having to pay, I mean, I get that it's not said here and it's implied, but it's also not authorizing the expenditure of any funds on our part. It's only authorizing Jagway, who took responsibility for it, to clean up.
And, and I think we have a fairly clear position as a board that they're gonna take on responsibility from start to finish, and our attorney and our superintendent wouldn't necessarily agree to something the board hasn't directed them to in one way or another, right?
Yeah.
So knowing that, he would have to come back and say, "I agreed to something that's outside of the board's approval."
You know, the attorney and I have been working on this day and day and day in and out on this, so.
So there's our expense. It's not on the remediation. It's on the legal fees.
That's always, that's always.
Yeah, we won't, we will be responsible for some legal fees, but the $80,000 budget that we had to rep, to do this should, is definitely not gonna be $80,000. And the, the good part is something that the expenses we've already laid out, other than, other than legal fees, is part of the settlement. So they will be reimbursing, they're reimbursing us. And, and basically, one of the reasons is because the things that we did, they would have to do anyway. So they can take our data and actually make decisions based on that, like the subsurface exploration they have to do. They did, they did that. We did all these different DEP requirements that we have to do. So what we should expect to have a decent reimbursement plus no out, no cost out except for any legal fees.
And they're gonna use the same LSRP that we would have, too. So we're pretty confident that...
Well, you remember when I spoke to everybody and said, "I would only agree to the settlement if we all decided to hire French and Prullo and Vello, our LSRP, to oversee the project." And the good news was the insurer, the, the company Jagway decided to use the two people that we've been using already for a period of time that I feel very comfortable with and I've had a history with. So I didn't feel the need to have to hire them, a different person, to oversee the people that I wanted to choose in the first place, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay?
Any other questions on this section? Mariana, you were the second, right?
Yes.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. Finance, Barb, you wanna take us to this part, please?
Yeah, I guess based on history and conversations tonight, I would propose we take four and five out of the block and talk about them separately. But I, we also met in finance just prior to this and went over the agenda items, all the new work.
Did you guys have a committee report or no?
Uh, nothing formal. We just met just tonight. So Kathy's like working on all the health, the switch to the state plan. That was part of the settlement agreement. And we were just saying that there's only a handful that haven't finished the paperwork, but they would be covered retro, you know, so for the sc, the school year. Hopefully, everything's ready by September. And then, as Damaris mentioned, the auditors have arrived for year-end things. They've done the enrollment and transportation pieces, and they'll start the finance stuff in August. We also talked about reviewing petty cash procedures, possible future revisions to that. So regarding today's agenda, yeah, I think four and five, we should just take out of the block. And then, so I'll make a motion to do items one, two, three, six through 11 on the agenda as a block.
I'll second in.
All right. The remaining, some of the year-end, the budget transfers and the finance bills and warrant reports, field trip requests, energy, energy consulting, that was, yeah, a separate thing we got in the Friday folder. The new legal for special ed matters, the drainage that we talked about, B&amp;G for Lakeview, additional pavement at Valley View, summer work. Yeah, this is summer projects. The bus garage, the drainage at the bus garage collapsed, and some professional development for the admin over the summer.
Any other questions, comments about the one through three and six through 11?
So either you answered my question about number six, the ESIP proposal. That cost is to not exceed 15,000.
Right. It's not, so it's $15,000. It, it's a pretty set rate due to the fact that what, what they're doing, and it's required to do the ESIP, you have to do this. And it does get rolled into the cost of the project, meaning it's budget neutral. It'll, it'll be part of the whole ESIP project, which is funded through the reduction in the use of utilities.
And I have a question about some of the paving. Maybe I should ask this in Buildings and Grounds, but I know when we did a lot of the paving work we're doing now, the LFRP kept talking about making sure that we do all the markings, ADA compliant, and all the lines that go drawn, all the signs. Is that all done to those standards?
Sure.
Are we clear there now?
Yeah, yep. It's all, actually, all the lining is done.
Yeah, but it's to the standards that the LFRP kept talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing I was wondering about with the legal, we're not limited to special ed matters, right? If we had like the conflict with the board of ed, the town hall.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, I didn't even think of that.
We're not limited to special ed.
Right, I like that.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, that means I could use, and it's, it just says special counsel. So when we have conflicts, like we have the same attorney as the town, if we need an attorney to do any kind of legal things with the town, we always have to use the town's other attorney. Our personnel attorney and your personnel attorney is the same. So that's a good, that's a good point I didn't even think of. So that's a, that's another value to that.
I would just note, too, that if you look at item two, it, it looks like a big number on, on the second batch of checks or bills and, and warrants for 2015, 16. A lot of those are, just for clarification for the public, a lot of those are initial outlays at the beginning of the year. So for software and licenses and everything, so a lot of, they're all budgeted for. But a lot, it's just a bigger number than I was used to. I know I went through a lot of the items on the bills list and got some clarification from Steve on, on all those items. So just wanted to point a clarification.
Yeah, too, with the transition, we thought whatever John could get done before he left, you know, kinda like loaded him up to the very end. Yeah. So that was appreciated.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please. This is again, this is one through three and six through 11.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Um, yes, but I will abstain on motion number two from the July bills list on check number 65859.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napol, Napoloni?
Yes. You wanna revisit four and five now, Barb?
Yeah. So, item four is the professional services for renovations at the Denble Municipal Building with Cara Ravina, not to exceed $4,800. So I just thought we should have discussion on this because, you know, Steve was on vacation last time and we didn't really get to talk about it as a whole board. But I have reservations about spending more money on, I don't, unless...
So you're moving motion four? You need a second before you can talk about it?
Yeah. As of, by itself. Do I have a second?
Second.
You're segging?
Second.
Okay, my turn. So I thought it would be good to just pull it to have a discussion on it before we move.
I agree. So I actually thought we would have more of a discussion in Buildings and Grounds, and please excuse me if I, if I fell asleep during the meeting and I missed it. But I guess some of the questions we had were that we have spent money before on architect fees that put the, putting us in that building in the neighborhood of, what was it? Close to $200,000?
$252,000.
250?
52.
Okay. And so, part of the reason why that wouldn't be appropriate now as a starting point is because we think we won't have to move, I wanna, just as point of clarity, we don't think we're gonna move as many staff members there.
The way I understood the, and you could clarify if I'm wrong here, but the way I understood that, the way that the drawings were done before involved a whole lot of space that we wouldn't be, I guess, utilizing now. Plus, the way I understood, the, the drawings from before included a whole bunch of, I mean, fairly large offices and walls and things like that that we wouldn't be needing this time. You tell me if I'm wrong. But they seem to be different.
Yeah, if you read the, the last one, you'll see, if you, if you read the square footage amount that they're talking about, they're, they're talking about the renovation of the entire, what would that be? West side of the second floor. So...
That's when you come up the stairs on the left?
Yeah. So I felt like...
I'm not good with mine.
I mean, after, after reviewing the drawings and meeting with the architect and speaking with the town several times, it's really only a matter of what we need is the north, the southwest corner, which would be the left, the left of the left, if you're looking at it. You're looking, you're facing, you're facing the parking lot, the left side, and then the left side of that.
So it's still the left-hand side when you come up. It's just the first row. And I mean, it was my understanding when I sat with the town and the board and the town sat at the table and we had those plans built up, it was because they were gonna renovate their side, we were gonna renovate our side, we were gonna share costs, share services, we were gonna split the bill and blah, blah, blah. So now, we'll just do our side. We're still looking at the same area. So my question would be, as Mr. Cass brought up earlier, the reason we're not moving as many staff members over there is because we think we're putting them somewhere else?
Well, the, the plans from the original drawing back in a few years ago were to move 10 people over there. The, the discussion, and that's why four and five are intertwined, would be to move the central office function of the special, of the superintendent, assistant superintendent and business department, which would be seven people over there, and find space for the special services department in one of the schools, namely Lakeview, hopefully Lakeview.
And there'd be costs to reconfiguring our space there, too?
There'd be some costs moving to, moving the special services department into Lakeview, I'm sure. I think there would be, you know. I can't tell you for sure because I don't have the information on where the, with the room utilization study, like five. I, I think a good solution would be to do five, put four on hold until five comes in to make decisions on four. That would make sense to me. I left both of them on there because I think they're, they're both intertwined and, and if, if...
So do you wanna do that, Barb?
I think if five doesn't pass, I don't see any need to do four.
Yeah, when I looked at the, the old prints, refresh my memory, I, I've been wondering if we need this many offices. You have one, two, three, four, five offices. Obviously, you know, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent need, need an office.
Isn't it four, Don?
Five. I got one, two, three, four, five, based on the blueprint I'm looking at.
We're pointing to the fifth one.
Six copies.
One, two, three, four, five.
That, that one's not, that, that one in the top right, that's, that's the, that's the, the, the north side of the, of the, of that side.
No, that's the old plan.
The shield office.
Yeah, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be, that's still their side.
He's saying the old one has that.
Yeah, but it's not, that's not our side. I don't...
We don't, we don't have a print of our side.
Our side is just the left side.
Our side's the left side. Draw a line down the middle of the thing. Our side's the left side.
Over here. So that's the town? Or was the town?
The left side would be us, the right side would be the town.
The town's not, at this point, the town's not interested in refurbishing anything up there and moving anybody into there. Now.
Well, they, they still have people up there now?
I'm asking, I don't...
They have, on the left side, they have one person's office, one, one cubicle.
Well, what about the, across the hall? That was the nurses' area, the health area, which had, there was a confidentiality issue, so if they moved that, you know, I mean, so that's still a use?
That's across the hall, yeah. Wouldn't be...
That's not in play, I think.
That was the bigger area.
That was the bigger area, if we chose that.
So now it's only the left side?
Right.
Is that gonna be enough?
Well, for seven people.
Four offices, and you've got four offices, and you got one, two, three, four cubes.
You need three offices and four cubicles. That's what you would need.
And where are they gonna put all your filing cabinets and everything? I mean, it may, you know, it may be worth the money to have the, you know, says, "We're not gonna need as many offices to have this re-scoped out and see if the, the space is adequate for it to support, you know, minus these special ed staff." I mean, it looks like, if you don't have anything on the right side, it looks like a real, real tight area.
You have, you have some storage space and you have the attic storage space, but you're right. Most likely, for our long-term files that we have now in the basement at 400 Marsh, we would need something like that again. So it's not gonna, it does, this definitely does not solve all of our issues, but it's a, it's a, I think it's a reasonable accommodation for us, and, and the cost is great because the town, the town and I are working on an agreement where there really won't be a yearly or a monthly fee. It'll just be the outlay of whatever we do for renovations.
We'd have to probably lease some storage.
We'd still need to lease the storage.
Which do we do now?
And I already spoke to our, our landlord. He said he would, even if we moved out of that building when the lease was over, he would continue to lease us that, that storage space we have. So we would, we'd still need some kind of offsite storage.
I mean, this goes sort of to that next sort of question, which is that we would be doing something in anticipation of the potential of moving into town hall to begin with. And we spend something like $55,000 a year or so?
About that.
In rent, not including the, the extra space. And if we were talking about an agreement that lasted 20 years, plus or minus, I mean, we could see a savings, if, even if it costed $200,000, I mean, we could see, start seeing a savings within five years easily. I mean...
Well, it depends on how much the other cost is for putting the special ed department somewhere.
Right. So even if, you know, I don't know what the worst-case scenario is. I certainly don't think it's gonna cost $200,000 or $250.
So I don't know what Robert's rules of order are for what Mr. Forte suggested. Barb, are you amenable to postponing the vote on four till you move and vote on five?
Yeah.
Well, she didn't actually move five yet. She only moved four.
No, but Mr. Forte asked to postpone the vote on four and vote on five first. I, I said, "I don't know if we officially have to table what we opened," or if could we just say we're gonna postpone that vote till after we do the other one.
And, and both four and five are, are in the approved budget. Both, both numbers, and it's not over the, the budgeted amount.
Do you have a... Yeah, I, I, you know, I just think looking at this, and, you know, I don't see Fox, I just think if you really have a professional, look at, look at that space there and see how you can figure everybody in there.
Well, I think...
What the cost would be, but also, you know, what's involved to move the special ed staff to a, another location and, I guess, the projected lease cost for the file cabinets at the, where you're at right now. And the other, the demographics, I, I think you need to get a little more definition and clarification from the town on where some of these...
All right. Well, we can't talk about five until it's moved.
Well, so, Barb, do you wanna table four and then make a motion for five, and then we can go back and forth?
Are we tabling it for the week or...
No, for like 20 minutes till we talk about five.
A timeout?
That's what I said. Can we just put it on pause?
Timeout.
Or less.
Yeah.
All right, let's undo the motion.
Well, I don't know what Robert's rules of order, but let's just pause it and...
Let's just assume tabling the, the motion is...
Without all the voting.
Then we can discuss five.
So, you wanna make a motion for number five?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the board vote on resolving parts one and two of the Ross Haber Associates LLC steady proposal for a total of $5,000.
Mike, did you wanna second that one again?
No, I'm gonna second.
Oh, you're done. Any second for that?
Awesome.
So, for the record, this motion was before the board's last meeting, and four people voted against it, so the motion failed. This motion was, as Mr. Forte said, spoken about at budget time, and four board members then also said they didn't wanna include it in the budget, but it was included, and it was put before us to vote. And he's coming forward with new information about the demographic study, which up until Mr. Anderson told out the last demographic study, I was almost willing to split the demographic study from the room utilization study, since we just spent $5,000 on a room utilization study.
But that's not...
But the demographic study that was done at the time before the Essling Lake thing, when it was just proposed, doesn't give us anything to... when it was just proposed, doesn't give us anything to...
So, we have...
So, if we do it right now, based on, there's a whole bunch of things being asked of the town, and they could say no to all of them, these numbers aren't going to help us at all. So, I'm still firmly against spending $5,000.
So, I wonder, Steve, if, when they do the study, do they give us a anticipated and potential type of, so it's not just one number?
There's a potential. And I just want to clarify what Mrs. Lindsay just mentioned, that there was a room utilization study. There was a study of the middle school schedule done, not a district-wide room utilization study, which this is a little different than that. One thing is about scheduling, one thing is about how, how do you most efficiently use your, all three of your buildings.
Which is what we pay our administrators for.
I don't know if I agree with that.
I mean, look, this, to me, this is a strategic thing. If this doesn't pass, right, then my strategy changes. My strategy changes to, you know, I can't make these kinds of decisions based on what I think, because I'm not, I'm not an expert in these fields. So, to hire an expert to decide something that's long-term and it has a big expenditure behind it, to me, makes sense. Now, I obviously have seven, six people here tonight, and they have to decide. If you decide not to do it, my strategy changes a different way of what I'm going to recommend. There's really no other way of putting it. So, if five doesn't go, you know, if five doesn't go, might as well forget four because I can't make those decisions based on, based on, without having five.
I don't think it's as simple as saying that we had a demographic study three years ago or so, and, you know, listen, we, the board, however many years ago, voted or tried to vote on putting a $70 million school in town based off of, you know, some anticipated something. And, you know, I don't remember exactly, so I'm not going to say, you know, what was done or what was not done, or why the decision was made or not, say, I decided, but I'm sure that, or I hope that, the board at that time had come to the conclusion based off of some up-to-date information. Now, we're not talking about a $70 million school. We are talking about trailers, we are talking about moving staff, we are talking about potentially saving the district dollars for going to the board, to the municipal building. And we're talking about some other utilization studies that I would imagine that go beyond just, you know, those sort of capital parts of it. I mean, imagine that it would include, you know, how to, you know, do more room sharing and things like that, too. In addition to the idea that, you know, where we are today and what the town's proposing of adding into the district, or into the town, is different than what it was a year ago. I think it's prudent, when we talk about potential big expenditures, to spend a certain amount to make sure we're doing it the right way. And, Mariana, I hear what you're saying about, you know, we hire administrators to do that, but, you know, we just hired a vice principal and we have principals. I've seen your resume, and I don't remember once in there being anything about being a, of room utilization or demographer in there at all, specialist. We have a tech team and a tech specialist, because they're not specialists in those areas, they're not experts there. I mean, we have, you know, managers and administrators to do the overseeing, but we hire experts and we bring in specialists to advise us and counsel us on doing the right thing for the district. I don't think it's as simple as saying that that's their job. Then don't hire any of these other people, doesn't make any sense. I don't think it's as simple as that. We have to make a decision that is, in the broader context of trying to do the right thing for the district.
Like I said, we have a two-and-a-half-year-old demographic study. I'd be willing to pay money for an updated demographic study, which may or may not give us the numbers we're looking for based on all these possible things that the town may say no to all of them.
But, so, I mean, here's, here's the thing, too. When you look at the demographic study from two and a half years ago, the development impact is small. It's like two kids per class. I mean, unless we think the town's going to build this massive, you know, structure somewhere, which I don't know where the heck they're going to build it because there's not a lot of space left to build, and I don't hear anybody in the town talking about buying a piece of property to try to build a huge complex, the numbers on that don't seem to have as big an impact. And, I mean, I wanted to get clarification on exactly what the goal of the study was, and my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, but we want to look at room utilization, where we're going to be in the next five years, is it?
Sure.
And look at, basically, one of the big questions out there is, what are we going to do with these trailers at all the schools? And is it appropriate, now that we're decreasing enrollment, we know that in two years, I think it is, we could totally be out of the trailers, one or two years?
Yeah.
Based upon the enrollment we have right now. But does that mean we get rid of the trailers? Does that mean we keep them just in case something happens? That's my understanding. Is that, is that what we're talking about and where we're at with, what you're looking to get out of it?
Sure. I mean, we're at the point where we had, years ago, 10, 11 years ago, decisions were made to come up with temporary solutions. Those temporary solutions have been here for 11 years. Like, it's time to decide whether or not we can actually demolish these things, if we, if we have enough space where we don't have to have shared classrooms. And I don't mean a shared classroom the way you would think, like, at period five, the social studies teacher's in there, and then period six, the Spanish teacher's in there. That's not what I mean. What I mean is, in our schools, in both elementary schools, we have classrooms where you have a speech teacher in there teaching a speech lesson while there's basic skills going on on the other side of the room, which is difficult because the kids that we're talking about now are your most needy-type kids that need to hear and listen, and then when they have distractions on the other side. So, again, a lot of, a lot of short-term decisions were made 10, 11, 12 years ago, but they're still here. And we have to be able to make, I think we have to be able to make sound decisions going forward of what are we going to do with this? Because those trailers weren't free. You know, those trailers cost a lot of money, and the installation of the trailers, there's sewer lines, there's gas lines, there's all these different utilities in those trailers. It's not just a matter of going to, you know, out to, out on Route 80 in, in, what's it called, Pennsylvania, plopping one of those trails in there. It's a pretty big process. It all has to be handicapped, accessible to ramps, all that. So, where are we with that? Do we leave them there? Do we pretend that it's okay to just have temporary storage, temporary space here in case we need it again in the future? So, all these things are kind of intertwined. We have to make decisions based on what I think, you know, facts, the best facts you could possibly have at the time.
So, interestingly enough, you bring up that the board made decisions 10, 11 years ago based on a demographer's report that said, when they, when the board decided not to go for the building of a new school, but for trailers, it was because the demographer's report said, "You're going to climb, 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 especially in the middle school, and then your enrollment's going to decline, decline, decline," which is exactly what's happening. And, I mean, a year ago, we were told, looking at the demographer's report that is in front of Mr. Anderson now, that's two and a half years old, that at this rate of decline, we would be out of the trailers. So, it was a temporary solution for a temporary problem, not a permanent solution for a temporary problem. That's why we didn't build, we put trailers. So, I understand wanting an updated demographer's report because now it was told to us 10 years ago is actually happening, but what's happening after that? I get that. Which was what the update two and a half years ago was supposed to do, and it continued to say the same thing. Like I said, I understand wanting that possibly.
I mean, I spoke at the last meeting about looking out strategically with the district and looking out on a long-term plan, and I look at things like these as what we need to do.